This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you.
I could call this August 15, 2022 council meeting to session at 7:02. Any... No, we don't have Pledge of Allegiance on here. Join me in the pledge.
My Pledge of Allegiance to this land, United States of America, and to the Republic for which you sinned, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
The addition I have is topics from the floor on here. So it'll be after the cancer part.
I moved the accepted agenda with the addition of topics from the floor. Looks like 3A. We can cheat. Thank you, Counselor Webb. Do you have a second?
Paul Stackman.
Thank you, Counselor Ash. Call roll, Stephanie.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mayor's report. Mayor Hobart's out ill tonight, so he won't have a mayor's report. So we'll just move right on into Citizen of the Month. And this month was Counselor Ash's pick, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. So my choice tonight is Lynn Shaw Hayes. For those who don't know, Lynn is kind of the mastermind and hard worker behind our community garden up at the school. So she has spent all season, I have been doing some tutoring in the vicinity. So on Tuesdays, very sporadically helping a little bit with harvest to see what's going on up there, but also have been in the neighborhood between other reasons. And she's just always there watering, is there gardening. She's a certified master gardener. And then all of the harvest from the garden goes directly to the food bank to feed our local citizens. So I just think that that as an ongoing effort is really incredible and special for our community. And you've been doing it a little while?
Well, I've been in this attic for four years now.
Okay. Yeah.
And I couldn't do it without my husband.
Excellent.
And also my wonderful lawn here, so.
Yeah. All right. So that's all. I think if you want to call up, they like.
Yeah, Scott's gonna get the official.
Ready, you, one, two, three. Do one more. And there we go.
Yes, well deserved. I get to watch the operation on a daily basis out my patio window. I always see the blue car pulled up over there most of the time. Silver pickup.
I distract my husband and talk to him.
Yeah. He pays me five bucks every time, so he needs to come over and distract and talk fish and.
I witnessed that one day. We were working, Dale comes over, I wave hi, nope, straight to Lynn's husband. And they were talking the rest of the time while we finished.
Maybe might have to start volunteering now.
I'm the volunteer security.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Been a few times, I've been out there flashlight.
Yeah.
But I think that was an idea for quite a few years, and it just kind of.
Were you...
There.
Were you part of the Ford group? Or?
I was, no.
That was an idea under Ford, but it just never kind of got off the.
Yeah. Now, I know they had the things built, the raised bed boxes, and they were about needing to be rebuilt by the time you got them.
Yeah.
So I think with Lynn's push there, it finally got off the ground.
Flooded twice, I'm pretty sure, the original. And then finally, the school got fenced up. We couldn't do anything until it was done.
Right.
And then we got a giant pile of dirt.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right. A huge pile of dirt.
With weight.
In June of 2019, we started this park, basically, and this pit where all piled up. And one lady I came in, there was like five middle-aged women, like me, trying to move these boxes. That was the beginning.
That's awesome.
Yeah. I'm pretty proud of it.
You should be.
We donated almost 500 pounds of food last year.
Wow.
We're about eating right now.
Great.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes. Pardon?
Thomas to the floor.
We added it.
Sorry.
Oh. Yeah.
You're trying to skip over Mr. White man, aren't you?
No, I'll never do that. My own chicken scratch, sorry. Topics from the floor, do we have any, Stephanie?
Steve Whitehead and then Sackler will be my to count them.
Okay. We're ready. Let us have it.
I think Steve Whitehead, 864 State Avenue. And I just had a... But everyone was laughing. I sat right there in that chair. It's December, we're all laughing, and three days later, we had our flood. So.
Don't get too comfortable.
Snow flooding while I'm on council, that's a rule.
Okay, first off, this is about Grant Stadium. And I'm going to call it the Spencer Pavilion. I knew it would come to a head eventually, and I knew I'd probably be in the middle of it. I talked on the television in favor of it. But Saturday night from 12 to 1:30, we had a lot of noise, a lot of noise at the skating place. And in fact, my neighbor said at 3:00, they were still going, but that was beyond me. The next day at 7:00, I walked up, went behind the stadium, there were three trucks parked and three tents, and they tore a bunch of the plywood things down. And it's a different time now because, because of the skateboard parking, because of other reasons. So I figure we have three things, three choices. One is we can leave it there longer. One is we can take it down and plant four trees, but that would be a cop out. My plan is to put a pavilion there. The footprint is 120 by 30. To give it some perspective, a high school basketball court is 84 feet. So this is 26 feet longer than that, and 2/3 of the width, not quite as wide. Now, what I'd like to see there in this pavilion is all cement, open except for three walls. One wall would be about 15 feet in. Looking from Highway 47, you'd see a little bit of territory there, a little bit of building. And that's where you put the chairs, the fold-up chairs, and the tables. And also you'd put the, I don't know what you'd call it, but the hotspot for the cameras. I don't know what else you'd call it. But that'd be a good place to store everything, lock it up. And then it'd be covered, and you could see right through it, so that would help the police. The other thing it would do is it would bring the shack back. I don't know what to call it now.
Snack shack.
Snack shack, okay. It would come back into play. Now, the way I see it right now, it could be used. It's multipurpose, multi-seasonal. We have five months of rain. And I figure 100 chairs fit in there because I put that many chairs out on the basketball court where we had activities up there. So there's a lot of room. Also, the de facto road going back to the softball and baseball is the track now. And they would come by right next to that. And so there'd be additional parking there. So we've got parking there, we've got the snack shack there, we have a place there. And we'd add, make sure we had water and electricity there, and then we'd have cameras. I think cameras are becoming more and more essential in this town. Especially, I've got to bring this up concerning the skateboard park in the fact that a lot of towns have skateboard parks with lights. They also have two or three policemen on all night. Now, this brings the question is, do we have that capability? I think the only thing we, from what I understand, the only thing we can really do is catch them afterwards having cameras. And I realize there's the internet problem, I realize all of that. Let's see. I think it has more chance for a grants because it could be ADA possible. Now, you've got room down there for some ADA kinds of things. A long time ago, when we had a grant opportunity, we started up there at the picnic shelter, and we're going to wander down through there and put benches where those trees are with the idea that that would be an ADA kind of thing. So far, other than the skateboard park, we haven't done anything for seniors. And they don't skate. And so the picnic area could be used that way, but also now we could have a ton of things. And I got to thinking, I couldn't make the list here of all the things that could be used. But if you can't think of a reason besides jamboree that that could be used for, then I don't think we need it. But I could, I could go off, you know, off 100. Next fall in October, the political thing, somebody could walk in and do that. Someday, the Timber Unity Bunch could get together and say, where could we meet? Where could we meet? Trying to think of someplace, oh, how about Spencer Pavilion? It'll hold 100, and we could do it right there. And so even though we've got the basketball shed, we could have markets, we could have all those other things over in that pavilion with the idea that it's four times a year, it could be used for different things. So I think it'd be used quite a lot. One of the guys talking to us said, it's got to be high enough so they can put the pickleball thing inside that. And you could play pickleball inside. So, I mean, that's just one of those things. Let me see if I've got it right. Jamboree, it definitely helped, and the jamboree give us another 100 feet by, I'm thinking 100 by 30. That would be bigger than, it'd be equivalent to our basketball game up there, but not quite as wide. Let's see. Large group covered, just trying to catch everything here. Okay, I'll go number two. Number two is where the old high school was, the city, no, the school district was obligated to bring soil and cover that area there as part of their deal for Spencer Park, the high school up there. They brought in a light brown, powdery, gravelly piece of crap. It's not very good soil at all, at all. Now, Highway 47 was by our flagship park, and that's Spencer Park. We have an area just off from Highway 47. It's about 150 yards by about 50 yards of this stuff. Now, from what I understand, we can't add any depth to it, you know, the laws of all of that. But I think what we need to do is we need to finally decide to make that park grass irrigated and take one more step of making this one of the best parks in the state. The reason, the irrigation part is always a problem, but over there where they've got the skateboard park, they've got a faucet right there where I watered the trees. There's another faucet closer to the road, about 50, 40 yards down. It could be used, and I think we need to go from that area all the way down to the picnic shelter and water about 50 yards wide. Now, we have fallen into good times because of all the good things that have happened in that park to make that park come true. But now we have to pay a bill. The bill is we've got to make it better. We need to have that absolutely green, so when these people drive by, they say, my God, it can't be better than this. One day I came out of my cave, I live a block from the park. I went over there and I got a compliment, the baseball softball people, I could not believe how that park was being used. All four baseball, all four diamonds were being used, probably 200 cars around it. We have fallen into good times relative to that. Now it's our time to take care of the park. And I think we, I think we fertilize it, we seed it, we set up irrigation that will take care of it, and we make that green, green, green. So when people pass by, they would say, I can't imagine a better park. We have almost 80 acres of parks under this city, 80 acres. We're really, really fortunate. And I've got to give credit to all those people who helped manage it, the parks group, Joseph, you folks up here. Quite a good job. And all I'm asking now is, of course, like another dozen trees, I'm just throwing that in.
I've heard that.
But I'd also like, I'd really like to see that be really green. We've got grass everywhere else but down that hayfield. And so my thought is, let's take care of that. And that's it. So, a little thank you.
Thank you. You got another one?
Michael?
Okay. 665 by Grove, want to invite everyone to the dedication of the Hiroshima Peace Tree.
Oh, cool.
Happening Saturday, August 27, 11:00 a.m. at the Royal Baltimore Park. And we're going to have refreshments, and the keynote speaker will be Jim Gerschbach from the Department of Forests. I think that's about it, other than the only thing I need to coordinate is.
I sent you a response. If you send me what you want on the reader board, I'll do it. But Counselor Webb is the microphone and speaker.
Okay. Cool.
Oh.
He was, he said, he said, could I use your microphone and speaker? And I said, well, those were Counselor Webb's, you'll have to ask him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking. And for that, any questions or anything, or?
How's it growing?
Oh, good.
Looks like it's all right, huh?
Yeah, yeah. I think the most important is like the first summer. If it's good, then it should be good years to come.
Did you get that lady to come?
I'm still trying. I don't think she's going to be able to. She is coming up September 21 for another dedication. But for, in order for her to do that, she has a friend that she coordinates with to take time off of work because they're in Southern Oregon, she's 90. It's just, yeah, it's a lot. I did reach out to the, in Portland, there's a Japanese counselor's office, and they usually have representatives that come out to events like this. So I've seen if that can still happen. But if all else, Jim Gerschbach is the one who helped germinate all these seeds for the different trees in all the cities. So he can talk about the history and have a good speaking event there.
Go on, Michael.
Oh, cool.
Too long ago, it was a stinky tree nobody wanted.
Uh, right.
You've just got to be persistent, right?
Yeah.
And Mitch did a fantastic job building.
Yeah. We were complimented on the, when the people that came out and toured the downtown trees, they said that structure was the best in the state of Oregon for all the peace trees.
We have QR codes even, are you kidding?
Yeah. Now, the only thing, it's good you mentioned that. So the sign currently is placed in the structure. I know there's like a lot of vandalism, I guess, kind of going around the city. So I don't know, Scott was able to take a picture from his phone on the outside of the structure, but I don't know if he could get all three. So the three different QR codes take you to three different websites. I was thinking if we put it outside the structure, that we want it in a small little thing of concrete so someone can't pop it up. Probably want to leave it in the structure, so that's the only.
What if it was just a little closer to the edge where you could hit it with the camera?
The fence.
I was able to get it with my phone. I just did one of them, but I could have all three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. The deer would eat the sign.
Well, that's it. I'll see anyone that can make it, have you all there.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, now we can move on to consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes, August 1, 2022, page 1 through 3. I didn't have any issues. Else?
Nope.
The only thing I had was staff was to send this city parks ordinance?
Yeah, I didn't. No, I haven't sent it.
Okay. That's the only thing I had on the minute that was discussed. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion to approve the August 1, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Thank you, Counselor Webb. Do you have a second?
Aye. Second.
Counselor Norman, thank you. Call roll, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to have a section on here for counselors. Anybody, counselors got anything to say? Nothing?
I had a request from a citizen that we should probably make coming out of the swimming pool a right-hand turn only because somebody got in an accident, turned left, and somebody come out of there by the theater. They looked right, then they looked left, nothing was coming, they went, and somebody come out of the street by the theater. Which I don't see a big issue, but I thought I would.
Dome mirror?
Let people know. The other
Dome mirror?
thing I noticed was Knott Street being a very hazard to get onto the 47. I don't know.
You tried to fight him for lowering this to Biggs Corner?
That's not the problem. There's no visibility of traffic coming from Burnonia headed out of town for you to make a left hand.
It's vegetation in the field.
In what field?
So when you're on Knott Street and 47 is right here on the left, there's like trees and.
That manufactured home.
Oh, okay.
planted some trees, and there is no.
Is that in the right of way there?
I don't know. I think we'd probably have to talk to the state. But I mean,
Yeah.
part of developing that more, we're going to have to make sure there's visibility.
Yeah.
So just kind of a little heads up. I'm sure the people like their trees, but yet nobody can see to get.
Is there a pole directly across from it, a light pole or a power pole?
Yes.
We could put a dome mirror. We talked about, we're going to have to do one on Spencer. Until we.
Are those, are those legit? Are they?
I don't think they were.
What do you mean legit?
I mean, I mean, do they allow those? I've never, I don't know.
They used to have, the neighbor right across from Spencer had one for years.
So what, I remember looking into it a couple of years ago, which we're going to have to.
Yeah, we'll have to look again.
There was an issue with the city installing them. But, because we were talking about it with Dean, he wanted one. We could not install.
But we could, but the neighbors could. It's just an extra thing that would help until we can see if those trees are in the right of way and get the state to push on whoever that is to either dig them up and move them back or replant.
Right. But it is a very.
Yeah, there's a few spots like that where it's just you're gunning it and saying a prayer and going.
Yeah, yeah, you don't dilly-dally, that's for sure. You got to move. I've been seeing the same thing. I've been down there several times. It's like, okay.
Yeah.
Make sure you're definitely really good and clear to the right.
Yeah, to the left, there's no, or the invisibility.
It's the curve.
Isn't that, that's where the school buses pull out, too.
Well, luckily, the school doesn't.
They go further down, you can see.
They pull in Knott Street, and they come out of their driveway. So that gets them down a little farther for visibility. So they never pull out of Knott Street, they always pull in Knott Street, go behind the.
Is that just a letter to ODOT from us saying there's a.
Well, let's, we'll first check that the property owner, that it's not in the right of way. And then we can notice them that they need to limb them up or move them back or whatever. And then if they don't want to do that, then we can call ODOT. They don't want to just be part of the solution.
And I just see if we improve that street.
Yeah.
It's going to have to be dealt with, too.
Yeah. Might as well deal with it ahead of improving the street.
Yes.
Okay, I got it written down.
Well, the other thing, for you guys to know, I started working on the trail behind the sewer lagoons, the crack, for the crack sealing, so. Oh. Going to do it again. Field, wow, that hasn't been done, it had some really big. Oh, way back. Linnier cracks down the trail and and they were getting somewhere wide enough, I was afraid, afraid the way of a ski, a pair of bikes is going to get in there and your handlebars. But it's kind of surprised me that just filling them up actually made it look pretty good, just that way. But the plan is get the sand in there so we don't use too much crack seal material. And I'm sure it's going to sag in here. I probably won't do it till next week, maybe.
Yeah.
One day. And. I thought of you, I was on my motorcycle, and I forget where it was, but there was a secondary highway, like 47. I rushed the road up for 20 miles, and there was a crack. There was like more than half the road, both lanes, miles. I'm like, how did they have time to do all that? It was almost solid crack seal, you know? Gee, it goes faster than what we have because. Oh, yeah. Ten miles.
Has one.
It must have been 10,000 miles of crack seal on one road.
It's crazy.
Anything, Counselor Ash? I can, I can let you guys know if anybody wants to give a hand on the day I do crack seal. Yeah, give me notice.
Let me know, Bill.
Depends, it's before the 30th, try your luck.
Oh, you're taking off?
No, go back to work.
Oh, work, yeah.
Minor detail.
If you have a topic, please let me know two days in advance if you're invited.
In case we're going to have a.
If you're, if multiple, more than two are showing up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, easily. Don't take a big crew, probably just one, one hand to kind of watch for the pedestrians. The bikers are, hate to complain, but they're kind of.
They're, they're entitled.
Oh, I, you know, I had my pickup there, and then I'm sweeping the sand. And of course, I would pull over enough so they could ride by the pickup. I'm right rear of the pickup, and I just turned, and there's one coming, just right there on top of me, you know? And it's like, ring your bell or say something. I mean, I got death. But they don't say anything, and they're on you before you know it. It made me jump.
So.
Same for, you know, we're on our own.
Yeah. I was ringing my bell. I rented one of the guy's bikes there, and boy, I was dinging my bell every time I come upon somebody. They were probably getting annoyed. Donna was.
Donna's like, you don't have to do it every time.
So all I was going to mention is, I was going to ask Suzie, since she was here, how that's going with the new bike rental stuff.
Just get people talking to them and stuff. Somebody suggested putting a sign more in the parking lot there.
Are they, they haven't figured it out yet that it's there, kind of thing? They haven't figured out it's there, kind of thing? People, public. I was using, he's got some advertisements going, so.
Yeah, they, I think both of those entities need like a sandwich board or something up. As where I used to park across the street, but now it's the right of way, like right there. Because nobody can park there, it's just kind of an entrance, maybe it'd give people a heads up.
Palypso's used to have a sandwich board right by the little island they.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. They would put boots on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any power issues so far? No. Power?
He's plugged into mine, the 110.
Hasn't tripped anything?
No, Blake said she's got plenty of power there. She has a 50. Or it's pulling enough for her unit to be a 50.
So do we don't need to do it underground, or?
No, he still thinks it'd be better to come off that with a closer plug, not just have, because you lose some in the extension cord business.
Extinction cords. Oh, yeah.
So we're still working on that.
Okay, well, till this meeting to adjournment at 7:32.
No admissions? No administrator?